Good evening. The regular meeting of the Independent School District two seventy-nine school board is called to order. At six o'clock PM on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Board Chair Tanya Prince is out of state and is joining this meeting remotely. I, Thomas Brooks, will be acting chair. This regular business meeting of the Ossio School Board is being conducted in the boardroom of the Educational Service Center. The meeting can be monitored electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archive recording of tonight's meeting will also be available on the district website. Seated in front of you this evening from my left and your right are Director Kelsey Dawson, Director Erica Foster, myself, Thomas Brooks, Director Sarah Mitchell, and Tanya Prince and Keith Tate are both in attendance, participating remotely in a public location via Microsoft Teams. Also present in the boardroom is Superintendent Dr. Kim Heil and members of the Superintendent's Cabinet. Those of you who can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Foster, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, are there any additions to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Director Foster, seconded by Director Dawson, to accept the agenda as presented. Any discussion? The Board Secretary will call and each board member four will call a vote.
Director Brooks?
Yes.
Director Foster?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Prince?
Aye.
Director Dawson?
Aye.
Director Mitchell?
Aye.
Six, I, and zero, nae.
Thank you. Our next standing agenda, agenda item is recognitions. We have no recognitions this evening, but before we proceed with our agenda, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the tragedy that has shaken our community and state. As you're aware, about a week and a half ago, our community was struck by a horrific act of violence. They claimed the lives of Representative Melissa Hortman and her husband Mark, who were deeply rooted in Brooklyn Park. In the same incident, Senator John Hoffman and his wife Yvette, a Fernbrook Elementary School staff member, was seriously injured. Our hearts go out to Hortman and Hoffman, to the Hortman and Hoffman families. No one should have to endure the pain you're going through right now. Our deepest condolences are with you. Both Representative Hortman and Senator Hoffman have served our school community for many years. And Ossio Schools were committed to fostering environments of safety, respect, and civil discourse, and condemned any act of violence that undermines these fundamental values. Please lean on one another in the days and weeks ahead and seek support if you or a friend needs it. And of course, continue to keep the Hortman and Hoffman families in your thoughts, as well as our school district community, as we navigate these extremely difficult times. Board members, just wanted to check in with each of you if you had any additional comments.
I just would like to thank you for making that statement and just, just continued to take that moment to acknowledge the deep pain and grief our community has experienced and continues to experience with the assassination of Melissa and Mark Hortman and then and also just Senator John Hoffman, I think it's, it is, and his wife, just praying for their full healing and I, you know, I think it's really hard as elected officials, we sit in these seats and have to make really tough decisions and really vote our conscience and, you know, I just, you know, really think our community has really come together, our school district community, to support all those who knew and loved and saw their leadership through, so thank you for your statement, Thomas.
Thank you.
Yes, I would echo your statements, Director Brooks and Director Dawson. And we know that this has been an extremely challenging time for our community, and we've also seen how our community has come together after this tragedy, so thank you for acknowledging that, and we will continue to work together to ensure that we uplift the values of our district and uplift the value as elected officials and partnering together in our mission. So thank you, Director Brooks, for sharing that.
Thank you. The presentation this evening is Nutrition Services Summer Programming. Jeff Ansor, Director of Food and Nutrition Services, will you please start us off on the presentation and introduce your team members?
So, good evening, Acting Chair Brooks, Chair Prince, members of the board, Dr. Superintendent Kim Heil. I'm excited tonight to be able to share with my team our summer program with you. So we were asked to present and share some of the progress that we've made in what we do to serve our community and our school district over the summer months. I'm really proud where we've come from since two thousand and nineteen to today. We've expanded the program so much and are able to partner with Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, and we've increased our service of children more than twofold, so it's really exciting, and I have Melanie Gates and Colleen Fairbanks, both coordinators of Nutrition Services. They have a long tenure with us. They've been with us in multiple positions at schools and here at the ESC, and they play an intricate role in the summer programming and the success of it, so Melanie and Colleen are going to present today and take you through our summer programming. Melanie, Colleen?
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for having us. Okay, yes, so our summer programming this year has been officially in session since the, I think, June tenth. We had some credit recovery programs starting. And then throughout the summer, depending upon what program we're serving, they start at different times. So it's not, doesn't all start right away, but the programming comes in based on what type of program it is. So generally around the community, summer programming you'll see is referred to as "summer eats." That's a general term that maybe all school districts use, so that's where we follow, sync. And what we do in Ossio is we provide meals for our scholars and to our community. So we could be at a community site and it could be one of our scholars. We would find that out when we get there, but when we talk about our scholars, that means programs that are district-driven. And as Jeff mentioned, we partner for the community with Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center and some other sites that we'll talk about, and that's what we talk about when we refer to community. So we hope today, again, thank you for having us, that you will learn the growth and reach of our program. So summer meals. These are some pictures from over the years of who, how, and where. So you'll see here pictures of a couple of our kitchen staff. That's the who. In collaboration with our community partners, our district team that we serve, like say our Kid Stop staff, some of our credit recovery staff. And then you'll see rec on the go is a community term for Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, and that is what they call their community programming, where they go to basically parks or apartments or different sites that the community has identified as a good place to reach kids, and we provide meals there. Again, you'll see like some boxes there, and that is how those meals are distributed into our park and rec. So if it's not an internal program where we can serve within our own kitchens, we're delivering baked meals to the parks and other community sites. And then at the top there, you'll see, we call it our new fancy food truck. It is not in, it is not, it's not mobile yet, but it's gonna be, so that's, that's up there waiting to happen. Okay, so here, here's an overview, and as we go through, this is just a overview, and Colleen is going to jump in here too soon and talk about what is this overview. But overview, big picture, this is what our summer entails. We are serving meals at fourteen of our ISD two seven-nine sites, supporting district programming. Again, it could be Kid Stop, it could be our camp programs, credit recovery. And then we'll get to this terminology a little bit later, but we refer to open sites as where, even though we're serving our district programs, the community can come during our serving time and enjoy a meal with us. And we have eight of those ISD sites, and it's always our goal each year to have a lot of them. And Colleen will talk a little bit about how do we get to that eight number and when she gets up here. So with Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, as Jeff mentioned, we have totally fifteen parks, five campsites, and six apartment complexes. In addition, in Brooklyn Park, we are partnering, partnering with the Salvation Army, and we're supporting their camp program with meals. For the, the last three or four years now, we've partnered with I Strive Mung Program, where we provide them meals. And new this year, we're partnering with District two eighty-seven to provide meals for their program. And we mentioned the fancy food truck, that's going to be coming. And then overall, all of our staff that work in the summer are ISD staff. So we hire from within, within our kitchen staff, and we always include our on-call nutrition subpool, and they work with us as well. So overall, it's forty-three sites that we're providing meals for, and three of them are new sites for us this year. So out of forty-three, three might seem like a small number, but it's a big endeavor because within that, there's a lot of different logistics that go into it.
Okay, so a little bit about what is different between school year food service and summer food service. So during the school year, we know that meals are free to all students, breakfast and lunch to all students through the state of Minnesota, and we, we can do that in summer. However, in the school year, the kids kind of come to us, right? They're in a school building and we provide meals to them. In the summer, we go to where the kids are. So we work with Brooklyn Park, we work with Brooklyn Center, we work with the different programs in our district. We find out where the kids are going to be and we provide that support to them. So we are very intentional on finding out where are the kids going to be and where can we bring meals to them. During the school year, mealtimes can be at any time during the day, really. I mean, the only regulation during the school year is that breakfast has to be before or at the beginning of the school day. In the summer, it is completely different. We have to tell MDE when we're serving breakfast, when we're serving lunch, and we cannot be outside of that time. So if we tell them that at Birch Grove, breakfast is from eight fifteen till nine fifteen, if they would happen to show up and do an audit and they see a student come in at eight-ten and we give them a breakfast, we cannot get reimbursement for that breakfast. So the regulations are much more stringent in the summer than they are in the school year. During the school year, we have the same customers every day. We know that when we go into a school, we have that same enrollment every day, and we're hoping that they choose to eat with us every day, but it's the same customer Monday through Friday, hundred and seventy-some days of school year, right? And in the summer, our customers can change every day. So if we have a park program, which is an open program, today we might have fifteen kids show up. Next Tuesday, we might have four show up, and the week after, we might have forty show up. We don't know, and we're just hoping that they come to us, but it's different customers every day. And then during the school year, we say that every student in the building is a customer. Every one of our students is a customer, every customer is a student. And again, in the summer, our customers can be any child aged eighteen and under. So you do not have to be enrolled in Ossio area schools, you do not even have to live in our community. If you want to come to one of the park programs or one of the school programs that is an open site, anybody aged eighteen and under can come in and get that meal as long as they eat it at the site for breakfast and for lunch.
Okay, so what goes in, what goes into summer food service planning? It's a lot, and like most departments within the district, we start in January, where all the different departments come together and decide what are we doing over the summer, what buildings are going to have construction, and what's going on. And from there, we take a lead from what programs are where. So if Kid Stop decides to put programs in certain buildings, that's where we're going to serve. And again, that has different ramifications that Colleen will, will get to. And so from there, we just take a lead from there and try to make an estimation of how many programs is that going to be? And what is that going to look like? We've been doing this for a while, so we can make our best estimation. And from there, about mid-March and April, we start to try to hire staff for what we believe will be our positions. And in conjunction with that, we are, again, like Colleen said, we're going out and soliciting the community. Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, what do you have? How can we get involved? Where can we serve you? And trying to get new customers as well. So like I said, this year we have three new customers, and we're happy that they reached out to us and wanted to partner, and we look for ways to make that happen. So operation-wise, like Colleen mentioned, the Minnesota Department of Ed, the MDE is involved, and there's an application process. We have to ask for our sites that we want to serve meals at to be approved. Training, there are regulations around training. The MDE has specifics about training for our staff, for our ESC staff as well. We have a district chef that works very closely with us, Mr. Jim Quast. He couldn't be here tonight, but he works on menu creation, and he helps us plan food routes when we're delivering meals. Regulations, like Colleen mentioned, some regulations. Colleen will get to this. Open site, closed site, what does that mean for us as a district? We have to do site visits. Some of the sites that we have get three visits a summer. So we are good stewards, and we're very responsible of all the regulations that go into the meals that we're serving and the meals that we're claiming. And then marketing communication. We work with Kay's team. There's regulations about what kind of marketing has to go out, and what does that look like? And then MDE sets that parameter, and Kay's team works with us on that.
Okay, so we'll talk a little bit more about those regulations. We've talked about open and closed sites. That is also called area eligibility. So if a school during the school year has fifty percent or more of their children approved for free and reduced, that allows us to have that as an open site during the school, or during the summer, okay? So that is our goal, is to find as many of those sites as we can that have programming, so that we can open those sites up to anybody in the community. They can also be approved through census data. So a couple of years ago, we were able to get Maple Grove Senior High approved as an open site because there was an area of the population that was over fifty percent basically free and reduced or considered poverty level, which then approved that school. And once a school is approved for summer food service as an open site, that designation stays in effect for five years. So even if something changes the next year, once we have that on record, we can do that for five years. We can have that site as an open site if there's programming there. We talk a little bit about meal accountability. There are a lot of paper, meal sheets that get turned into us every month. So every time we're doing meals, we have a, kind of a checklist, or we can use a clicker, and then we have to fill out a meal count sheet for every meal, every day, every mealtime, every day. Forty-three sites, times breakfast, times lunch, times snack. It's a lot of paper that comes back to us. And we keep that, we are required to keep that on-site for three years plus the current year, so we have a lot of paper in the vault right now. But it's, that's just what we have to do, and they will come and audit it. They will look at it, and they will say, "At this park, you claimed this many meals, and your meal count sheets match up. Good job." So we are very, very conscious of what those meal count sheets are and how we claim those meals. Marketing and communication, as Melanie said, we have regulations around what the message has to be to the Health Department. We have to notify Brooklyn Park Health Department, we have to notify the Hennepin County Health Department of where meals will be served for the summer, so that they can come out and take a look at the sites if they want to. We have, we are required to notify, I think it's the newspaper of the, they don't have to run the, the press release, but we have to notify them of that. So there's a lot of things around marketing and communication. We also have to make sure that all staff has civil rights training. So our staff gets that every year in the fall, so if you're a nutrition staff person, you get that civil rights training. But we also give that civil rights training every single year to all of our summer partners. Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, Salvation Army, if you're working in those sites, I'm sending you civil rights training, and I'm asking you to complete that and sign off on that. So every, every single person that's working for us gets that civil rights training. And then as Melanie said, we have operational visits, and it can be anywhere from a pre-operational visit for a new site to a first-week visit for a new site to sometime during the first four weeks. Some of our programs are only four weeks long, and they're going to get three visits in those four weeks, just to meet those requirements. But we're out there making sure that, you know, and again, we're not looking for anything punitive. We're just partnering with those, with our partners to make sure that they have the proper signage up, or they're doing the meal count sheets correctly, they're serving meals at the time that they've told us they're going to serve meals. We're just making sure that everything's going, you know, going smoothly and that things are being followed. And this is a big one for us. So from two thousand and nineteen until two thousand and twenty-four, we don't have this year's included, of course, because we don't have the numbers yet. But from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-four, we had a lot of growth, as you can see here. So we had, in two thousand and nineteen, we had ten sites in the school that we did programming at, and only one community site, which I believe was the Zane Wood Community Center. And we had, you can see there, we had just over twenty-five, almost twenty-six thousand breakfasts served that summer, twenty-nine thousand lunches, and then seventeen hundred dinners. Currently, last summer, we had nine school sites, nine ISD sites, we had twenty-seven community sites, and we served just about twenty-seven thousand breakfasts, forty-five thousand lunches, and seventy-eight hundred snacks. So in two thousand and nineteen, we had a total of almost fifty-seven thousand meals, if you add up the, the three different categories. And last summer, we were just over eighty thousand. So it's, it's very significant growth. Again, as I said, we, our goal is to go where the kids are. So we work at where, where can we bring food to the kids that need it? You know, and I had a great story from last night. I went to, did a site visit last night, and we had a dad come with three kids, and he loves the program. He brought his three kids, and he sat at the picnic table for an hour and a half and played cards with all the kids that were there. So it was just a great community builder to see this dad, and the Brooklyn Center staff was joking, they're like, "We're gonna hire him." Because he comes, he helps us carry our stuff in, and, and he was sitting down teaching the kids how to play card games. So it, it was really fun to see. I sat there for the hour and a half while they were doing their programming and just had a lot of fun with, with the families too, so it's just, it's really nice to see the growth and how it continues from year to year.
Okay, so as we, as we mentioned, there's marketing that is involved, and these are just some of the different tools that we use to get the word out to people. And the first one on the No Kid Hungry, that is an app, and so you, anybody can find information there, and it comes from all the food sponsors, which we consider ourselves, that are providing meals in the summer. It uploads there. So when they, when, like for us, when we submit an application to the Minnesota Department of Ed and the MDE, that information flows to this app. The one on the bottom, the state, that is another app that is updated with all the free meals to eighteen and under that are available in the community, and then, of course, our own district website. And so those are kept up to date, and people can come. One, one thing about the regulations is those meals do have to be eaten on-site, so that's an important communication piece. So when families come, like Colleen mentioned the dad last night, yes, he had to sit there. One, because he probably enjoyed it, but two, because the meals do need to be eaten on-site as required by the Minnesota Department of Ed. So again, we thank you for your time. If anybody has any questions for us?
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, and I love your phrase, "we go to where the kids are." That's so, that's so great. I was just curious, where, the feedback you get from parents, where are they mostly finding the information of how to find you? Is, is it one of these apps or what, or the website?
You know, that's a good question. Colleen, jump in if you want to. So we find with, for example, for our internal programs, our buildings, once all those buildings are identified based on construction or whatever else is going on, our schools do a good job of communicating to families before the end of the school year. So we know where those sites are, and they do a good job communicating to families. The programs do, like for example, Kids, Kid Stop, they will communicate to their families. Our community programming, the Camp Rocks is one. The older programs are called Game On, and OMG, they do a really good job of communicating that way. And then, yes, our community partners, Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, have a very active database, and they do a lot of communication as well. They're very, they're very strategic in which parks and apartments they target. They know where the kids are going to be mostly. Trial and error, you know, after years, when you can identify which park isn't maybe a good one for families to get to. And then from there, they will target that area, whether it's an apartment building, they do flyers, or just the general area of a park. So they work collaboratively with different building managers in the city as well to get those out. But these are like the online tools that, that parents can go to.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Well, I just really want to thank you for this presentation. I mean, I know a couple of weeks ago, we heard your budget, budget presentation and kind of heard another overview, but I just, you know, every year, I just, I want to recognize your team, your leadership, Jeff. I mean, since I've known you, you've bring a lot of heart and care and intentionality. And I know to Nutrition Services, and I think that you can see that when kids are like, I go to lunch a lot with my little guy, and like, you know, just kids are happy, and they're always greeted with like a smiling face, and I think sometimes access to food can be such a barrier for so many, especially even in our district, as you mentioned, kind of where the free and reduced lunches are. And I just think that nutrition is just not a support. It is really foundational, and it really is representative of who we serve, and I know you take great care, and like you said, the menu, and just how you're reaching out to families, and just, and going to where our families are and our kids are, and out to families and just, and going to where our families are and our kids are. And the, the food, you know, I know that you really work hard, that it's healthy and culturally responsive and, and just really reflective of our, of our community. So I just want to just say thank you. So this is very uplifting and I'm so glad that we're in community. I really appreciate, Jeff, the way your team and how you, how you deliver nutrition services for each and every one of our students. So, thank you.
Okay. I also wanted to say thank you and I really appreciated the strategic approach. It seems like you've taken even the shift in the past five years. It's really interesting to see the shift from mostly schools to the community sites. And I was somebody that benefited from summer programming. So I really appreciate seeing what you guys are doing and the care and intentionality, like Kelsey mentioned, so. And I appreciate your very positive approach to this and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheri Prince, Director Tate, checking in with you.
Are you still there?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next agenda item is audience opportunity to address the school board. No speaker cards were submitted, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Heil.
Right. Thank you. Good evening, Acting Chair Brooks, Chair Prince and school board members. As we come to the close of another school year, I want to take a moment to extend my heartfelt gratitude to each member of our school community, our dedicated staff, engaged families, and most importantly, our incredible scholars. This year, we made great strides, not just in academics, but in the strength of our partnerships. Together, we embrace the power of listening, truly listening to one another's needs, ideas and experiences. Whether it was through formal feedback on a cell phone policy, parent meetings, attendance boundaries, classroom conversations, or community events, your voices have helped to shape the path that we walk together. And when change was needed, we acted because listening without action is not enough. At the core of our work is the belief that every individual, each scholar, staff member and family holds intrinsic value. We are stronger because of your perspectives, your stories and contributions that you bring. This belief has guided how we collaborate, how we build inclusive environments and how we continue to grow. So thank you for walking this journey with us this year, for your trust, your feedback and your partnership. Thank you for the grace you extend to one another each day and showing up daily, day after day, with commitment and care. So may your summer be, summer be restful and joyful and full of connection. We look forward to welcoming you back with renewed energy and a continued commitment to honoring the value of each of us brings to our community. Thank you. So a regular part of our superintendent report is to share the points of pride in, in our district. By sharing our points of pride, we are taking the time to recognize and celebrate our scholars, staff and our community members who are contributing to the accomplishments of our mission. I have members of our district cabinet here to assist in sharing some of those examples from last month.
Thank you, Dr. Heil. In the area of achieving dreams, congratulations to the ACOA area schools class of two thousand twenty-five graduates. From May thirtieth through June eighth, graduates from two seven nine online, adult basic education, Maple Grove Senior High School, ACOA Area Learning Center, ACOA Education Center, ACOA Senior High School and Park Center Senior High Schools were celebrated at ceremonies. The graduates are on to do great things in the world and we are so proud of them.
This is a new computer. I'm not sure I'm volume here.
So during their last week of school, the class of two thousand twenty-five visited their former elementary schools for senior parades. As they walked the halls, staff members and current students cheered them on and gave them high fives congratulating them on their graduation. It's like some hugs there, too. Awesome. Congratulations to Maple Grove Senior High graduates Matthew Hoyt and Gabe Hockett for being named two thousand twenty-five National Merit Scholarship winners. They are two of two thousand five hundred merit scholar designees who were chosen from a talent pool of more than fifteen thousand outstanding finalists in the two thousand twenty-five National Merit Scholarship Program and were awarded scholarships for their future studies.
Congratulations to all of the spring student athletes on successful seasons. Highlights include: the Maple Grove Senior High School Girls Golf Team placed second in the state tournament; the Physically Impaired Adapted Softball Team placed third in the state tournament; the Girls Synchronized Swim Team that represents all district high schools took fourth and sixth place, place at their state meet; the Maple Grove Senior High Girls Lacrosse Team were consolation, consolation champions in the state tournament; multiple track athletes placed in the state tournament, including Maple Grove Senior High runners Rebecca Lang, Lillian Wade, Eva Williams and Mackenzie Lox, who won the four-by-four-hundred relay race; Maple Grove Senior High Runners Abigail Oakland, April Watson, Mackenzie Lox and Rebecca Lang, who placed second in the four-by-eight-hundred relay race; and Maple Grove Senior High Senior Henry White, who placed third in pole vault. The Park Center Senior High Boys Volleyball Team made an appearance at the first ever Minnesota State High School League Boys State Tournament. Check out the full spring sports roundup on our website. In the area of contributing to community, thank you to everyone who joined us for the Crestview Elementary School Alumni Event on June third. It was a great way to celebrate the school's legacy with Crestview staff and students from nineteen sixty through today.
In the area of lifelong learning, fun events took place across the district during the last few weeks of school. Events included field trips, barbecues, fifth grade celebrations, all school celebrations, concert, field days and more. Check out our end of year wrap-ups on our district website to learn more about the events that took place. Garden City and Palmer Lake Elementary Schools hosted multicultural nights in May to share with students the wide array of different cultural traditions and make up their respective, that make up their respective schools. At Garden City, event attendees could enjoy seeing the Aztec dance group participating in community drum circle, playing games with different cultures and creating craft projects such as kumhimo braid from Japanese culture and ojos de Dios from Mexican culture. At Palmer Lake, attendees could take in a variety of activity, activities such as world map trivia and aci game from Ghana, Native American games, henna tattoo artists, art projects from different cultures and performances such as fashion show, drag and dancers and a drumming and dancing show. In the area of mission-driven employees, the dedicated work of ACOA Senior High School teacher Jen Kramer and her students was recently featured in her "We Belong: A Celebration of Community and Inclusion" project that saw one hundred portraits of OSH staff, students and alumni featured around the building. Kramer said visibility and connection is such a huge part of student feeling, like they belong to a community. The project featured a hundred photos of ACOA Senior High's one hundred year celebration.
We have a few final notes and reminders for tonight. From now until August fourteenth, ACOA schools will provide free meals, as you heard, heard earlier, to children through the federally funded Summer Food Service Program. That includes any child eighteen years of age or younger may participate. Meals will be provided during allotted timeframes and must be eaten onsite. There are to view sites and times for the meals at districttwosevennine.org/summermeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is school board reports. Director Dawson, do you have a report?
I do not.
Director Foster, do you have a report?
I do. I don't want to steal your thunder, though. Okay, we're both on policy committee, so. We had policy committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. Kind of the end of the school year is a blur. Talking about quite a few items and then looking ahead and how we're going to approach the coming year. So it was a really great strategic look at coming policy review.
Thank you. Director, or Chair Prince, do you have a report?
Yes, the Joint Powers Board for the Northwest Suburban Integration School District met for routine business, approval of the org chart and employee compensation. And just again, routine business, but we did meet and that was what we covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Tate, any report?
No report.
Director Mitchell?
Yeah, we had our final CPAC Community, Community Education Program Advisory Meeting of the Year and did kind of some summer highlights, budget updates and, you know, fun, exciting news, like Kids Stop being fully staffed again this year. And a fun fact, I just confirmed with Brian, but we're, our district will be serving over six thousand students this year and I just thought that was amazing. So that number's so large, I had to make sure that was accurate.
Thank you. All right. So I just pulled up the policy committee agenda from June ten. So we, so we're on a three-year review cycle right now. And so this year, we are reviewing our eight hundred series policies, nine hundred series policies, two hundred series, and that is it. So those policies will be coming forward. As a heads up, in this cycle, we'll be reviewing the five hundred series next school year. So I know that we've given board members a heads up to start reviewing those as well. But yeah, if anyone wants to start looking at any of those series of policies that I just mentioned, again, the agenda is online and then more information will come in upcoming meetings. All right. The next agenda item is the consent agenda. Board members, our consent agenda items this evening include meeting minutes, financial reports, personnel items, certification of school district enumeration, resolutions for membership for Maple Grove, ACOA and Park Center Senior High Schools, software renewals, purchase agreements and other business matters. Are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
So...
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Director Dawson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Foster. Is there any discussion?
I do actually have some conversation points I wanted to bring up. Sorry, there's a little bit of feedback. Okay, as a board member, I affirm our desire to maintain active participation in the Minnesota State High School League. I deeply value the role that athletics play in developing character, teamwork and community across all our schools. At the same time, I believe it is essential to uphold fairness and integrity in competitive sports. I stand by the principle that participation in athletics should be based on biological sex rather than gender identity. This position reflects the conviction that parity and inclusiveness in sports are best achieved when competitive categories are determined by biological sex, ensuring both safety and fairness for all student athletes. I strongly encourage MSHSL to evaluate its approach to gender versus sex-based sports categories, most notably allowing biological males to play in girls' sports. Title IX must be enforced by its original intent, equal opportunities for females and males in athletics. Other concerns I have as a board member are for legal liability for the district as members of MSHSL and complex between state and federal laws. My intent is not to marginalize or diminish the dignity of any student. Rather, I seek to foster an environment where every student can thrive with clear guidelines that promote equal opportunity while preserving the integrity of athletic competition. As we did, as we continue to engage with the MSHSL and other member districts, we must remain committed to dialogue, transparency and a shared pursuit of policies that serve the best interests of all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any further discussion?
So I have some additional comments on that particular item in the consent agenda and there's definitely been some interest in the community to understand what governs the participation in sports. And so the Minnesota State High School League does set the rules for participation in sports. And so right now, there's, you know, certainly no other organization for our students to be able to participate in sports. So this is, you know, what, what we participate in and we abide by the governing rules by the Minnesota State High School League. And right now, we do understand that there's, I understand that there's quite a bit of different questions around this, about Title IX interpretation, a number of lawsuits that are taking place. So I just want to acknowledge the questions and the concerns and the protection of female athletes in, in athletics. But I do also want to emphasize that the Minnesota State High School League is the governing body for athletics. So we do certainly support all of our student athletes in our sports. And as part of this resolution, we also accept governing bodies' authority over those decisions. So I think as we evaluate student concerns, parent concerns and coaches' concerns, it's something that we definitely want to continue to hear and understand and value. But at this time, it is really critical that we offer participation in sports and that is through the Minnesota State High School League. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mitchell?
Yeah, I just have a brief statement on item H as well that I just wanted to read. The acceptance of the renewal, this renewal of resolution for the membership of the Minnesota State High School League is not without concerns. It's necessary that we address and continue to monitor the ongoing legal challenges as they relate to eligibility. This is important because we want to protect the spirit of fair competition and safety for all our student athletes and also be in legal compliance with every decision we make together as a board and as a district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just would thank you for those discussion points. I guess what I'd like to do is to take a moment to center really what matters most and that's our students. And just as a point of clarification, it isn't just athletics. The Minnesota State High School League also governs over music and speech and robotics, visual arts, one act plays. And as school board members, you know, it is our responsibility to ensure each and every one of our students in our district feels safe and they belong. And every student deserves to feel supported and included, not only in the classroom but on the field and really throughout their high school, their, their school, their experience because, you know, academics is one piece of it, but to really get that full educational experience, all these other opportunities really matter. And I'm really proud that our district is home to some of the best athletic and non-athletic programs in the state. As you can just see, they're in our points of pride. And that success is really rooted in our students' talents and their coaches' leadership and the strong sense of teamwork that really reflects our values as a district. And the Minnesota State High School League, you know, does like, I know what Chair Prince said, sets eligibility rules, safety standards, participation guidelines, including policies to support inclusion and equity. And as a district, our role is to implement those standards in a way that reflects care and fairness for all of our students. And I just can't emphasize enough that our, those activities should be places where students can grow and build confidence. And I believe that we can support all of our students and make space for all of our students to feel seen, valued and really part of something greater than themselves. And that's really how we build our strong communities and really strong and thriving futures. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right. Sheri, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
Director Foster?
Aye.
Director Mitchell?
Aye.
Director Tate?
I don't know if he was on mute, but I saw you say it.
Director Dawson?
Aye.
Director Prince?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Six aye and zero nay votes, motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Our first action item this evening is the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget. Information will be shared by Kelly Benusa, Director of Business Services. Information will be shared by Kelly Benusa, Director of Business Services.
All right. And with that, good evening, Acting Chair Brooks, Chair Prince, members of the school board, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. Tonight, we bring forward for your consideration the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. The long-range financial planning, or LFP, process is transparent and collaborative in its approach, and incorporates several steps along the way to receive feedback and direction from the school board. We thank you for your attention to this work so that we can bring forward a budget for which you are well-prepared. Budget decisions are made using the long-range financial planning framework, which includes a financial forecasting model that provides the basis of our budget planning for financial sustainability. The school board engaged in several work sessions throughout the budget development process, and at the February 11th work session, the board carefully considered the budget recommendation. The LFP advisory team's assessment of impact was provided to the board prior to the action by the board at the February 25th school board meeting. Here's a summary of the LFP framework. The framework provides coherence between our system's strategic plan, the allocation of resources through the collaboration of budget managers, and it describes the direction provided by the school board. The LFP process has been used in planning for the past decade. Budget planning approval and implementation is continuous, is a continuous process, and we follow a similar timeline each year. The board's met to set the budget targets at the November work session, which provided direction for staff in preparing the program efficiency abandonment and redirection narratives that describe needed adjustments to meet budget targets and to complete the work on strategic investments. The levy was approved in December, and the pair summaries were approved by the school board in February. We then prepared the final budget, which reflects board-approved adjustments. Tonight, the budget presented is the same as the budget discussed at the June 10th work session. The budget is the culmination of this process, and we'll continue to, continue to review this process and use this process for the next budget cycle. The budgets that will be adopted are for all five funds presented on this slide. In this presentation, we'll provide detailed information about the general fund, because it makes up most of our overall budgets. Details of those budgets were discussed at the June 10th work session are included on the online school board meeting materials. The fiscal year '26 general fund revenues are budgeted to increase 2.2% or $7 million compared to our fiscal year 2025 revised budget. Areas of change are as follows. Increase in general education aid, $7.3 million due to a 2.7% increase in the basic formula allowance, and a projected increase in adjusted students served of 345. A decrease in operating referendum of 2.2 million, upper changes in projected students and increases in market value. Increase in TRA pension, adjustment of 1.3 million, which is offset by increased expenditures, a decreased interest revenue of 1.2 million, an increase in equity revenue of $777,000, a decrease in our REED Act teacher training of $749,000, which was for one-time revenue, an increase in our student support personnel aid of $743,000, an increase in our third-party medical billing assistance revenue of $396,000, an increase in abatement aid of $366,000, and an increase in DSEG transportation revenue of $300,000, a decrease in special education revenue of $200,000, and an increase in local optional revenue of $162,000. The fiscal year '26 general fund expenditures are increasing by 9.1% to the fiscal year 2025 revised budget. This is higher than the district trend of 3.5% and the board tactic of 3%. The budget tonight is nearly $12.6 million more than previously projected and includes several large adjustments. The board approved on February 25th budget adjustments with a net increase of $2.9 million, and those include a net zero long-range financial planning budget adjustment, including delaying the tactic of $350,000 for the repurpose of our new site to fiscal year '27, a $2.1 million increase for enrollment alignment, a $433,000 increase for Family Medical Leave Act expansion payroll taxes, and $30,000 for state leaves of absence and time off requirements. As planned, the compensatory maximum hold harmless estimate of $5.5 million was also added. The fiscal year '25 strategic investments for one year only of $1 million was removed. The board direction was provided in February for $921,000 of savings from the 279 online program reconfiguration, and the board approved for fiscal year '25 mid-year budget adjustments, which also included one-time savings of $236,000. The net effect of the revenue expenditure budget variance on the proposed general fund budget results in an anticipated operating deficit of $22.7 million. The fiscal year '26 ending fund balance is projected to be 25.4% of annual expenditures or $88.3 million. This proposed fund balance is $12.4 million less than was anticipated in February. The board policy recommends a minimum fund balance of 5%, and we are in compliance with that policy for this proposed budget. Next, we'll review the five-year financial forecast projection for the general fund with legislative updates. This is a high-level visual organizer for the financial forecast that was shared at the June 10th work session. There are three sections of this projection, and the top section shows our revenues, expenditures, differences, fund balances, and fund balance percentages for a seven-year window. That begins with our most recent audited financials for fiscal year '24, which is shown in pink, the current year revised budget, and the proposed budget for fiscal year '26, shown in blue, and then projections for fiscal years '27 through '230, which are shown in green. For the next four years, assumption for revenues and expenditures used in planning for fiscal year '26 remain unchanged. Due to continued deficit spending, we're projecting $14 million in operating reductions for fiscal years '28 through '23. The next section shows the budget projection for revenues in blue and expenditures in red. As you can see, even with the general formula allowance being tied to inflation, expenditures are still expected to outpace our revenues. This final section looks at the fund balance projection at that same time period. The green bar represents our actual and projected fund balances for each year. The orange bar shows the minimum required fund balance of 5% as set in board policy. We are again planning for $14 million in operational reductions, starting in fiscal year '28 through '230, to maintain that 5% minimum fund balance. Key factors included in the projection model are, starting in fiscal year '24, Osseo is close to the current operating referendum cap with inflation, which was voter-approved. This means that we cannot use operating referendum as a lever to increase our revenue to help us balance future budget deficits. And, starting in fiscal year '25, expenditures are continued to expect, expected to continue to outpace revenues. Within our revenue tactics, our legislative reductions, starting in fiscal year '26, include a reduction for student support personnel aid, school library aid, and reduced reimbursement for special education transportation costs. These items total more than $1.1 million in lost revenue. An additional legislative net reductions for fiscal years '27 and '28 total an additional $788,000. Expenditure tactics include legislative improvements of almost $4.5 million for fiscal year '26 for the compensatory hold harmless component, which allows time to study the formula and make improvements at the state level. This slide is a summary of all five funds' budgets for the adopted fiscal year '26. Overall, fund balance is projected to decrease $573,000 for our Food and Nutrition Services Fund, which is shown in the red column. The Community Service Fund is the green column, and fund balance is projected to decrease $1.2 million. The revenue is increasing about $1.3 million due to anticipated growth in several programs, such as school age care, early childhood family education, adult and youth enrichment programs, as well as facility rentals. The expenditure increase of $690,000 is due to a combination of anticipated growth in those same programs and increased facility rentals. The Capital Fund is the purple column, and this fund, the revenue is projected to decrease about $143,000 due to a one-time sale of equipment of $500,000 for fiscal year '25, a decrease in our E-Rate revenue, and an increase in the voter-approved capital technology levy, which is tied to our market value changes. Expenditures are decreasing about $222,000. The change results in a planned surplus for capital fund balance of $173,000. The Debt Service Fund is the orange column. The increase in revenues for the Debt Service Fund reflect the required levies for ongoing debt service payments, and the increase in expenditures reflects the required annual principal and interest payments for our outstanding debt. The Debt Service Fund balance is projected to be $6.2 million at the end of June 30th, June 2026. And so tonight, the action item is the recommended adoption for the fiscal year '26 budgets for all funds. The adoption means that the budget was prepared in accordance with board direction.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of fiscal year '2026 budgets for the General Fund, Food and Nutrition Services Fund, Community Service Fund, Capital Fund, and Debt Service Fund?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to say thank you for being such a flexible department. I know it was a challenging year with the budget going on at the state level, and I appreciate the wisdom in the financial department and how you guys have approached this and developed it, and it's no small feat, and that is duly noted, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just would say, you know, it, I think it's, you know, we go through this whole year, and you extensively collaborate with the board to really find out where, you know, our values lie within our district, and I think that this is, it's just more than a financial document, it's really kind of turning our vision into action, and I, you know, approving the budget is one of the fundamental duties of a school board. And so I feel really proud of the work of the team, of our whole district, to be able to get to this point every, every year. And as Erica mentioned, I mean, it's been, it's been hard with the legislature and, you know, our limited resources, but again, I'm really proud of this budget. I, you know, I, this district uses our resources very, very wisely and to meet the needs of our students and staff, so thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
So I would add, of course, we've looked at this in detail at the last work session and in prior work sessions and board meetings, and the precision that we have in the budgeting process, the grasp that our finance department and business operations has and is able to share with us in detail, and in the agenda, there is quite a bit of detail. There's a really incredible annual report out there on all of the details of where and how we spend our resources, it's available there. So while we are absorbing a deficit spend, and, and we do regularly, we've had the opportunity to really be in the position to have the support of our community with the most recent operan, operating referendum, of course, the bond referendum as well. So that has enabled us to be in a very strong financial position, so between the support from our taxpayers and the excellence in our finance departments and the work that is done across the district to have a really balanced budget to make sure we're not cutting unnecessarily or being, taking too extreme of cost containment measures, while also ensuring that we're very prudent in our processes and in our budget approach, has really led to the opportunity where, where at this point, we are not making significant reductions as many other districts are. So I'm very happy and supportive of this budget, that while we are deficit spending, it is the right decision for our district to leverage our fund balance to ensure that we have the level of resources available across the district in this next fiscal year. So thank you to the, to all of the leaders and to all of, really all of the leaders across the district that participate in the process, and including our fiscal committee and the community members who participate there. So thanks to everybody for getting us to this point that we can approve this budget.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Prince. And I know it is really, it's difficult looking at these statements and seeing our expenditures higher than revenue in a number of categories, but, you know, the fiscal responsibility of our staff in past years has allowed us to be in this place where we can continue to meet the needs of our scholars, you know, as Director Prince said, without significant cuts. I always appreciate the intentionality of all of our, our staff in managing this budget and, and keeping us on task, so thank you for the presentation as always. As, it's been mentioned multiple times, we did a review this just a couple weeks ago, and had some time for questions then. But before we continue, any additional questions or comments? All right. All right, the board secretary will conduct a roll call vote.
Director Dawson?
Aye.
Director Prince?
Aye.
Director Mitchell?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Tate? I think he said aye.
I don't, yeah.
You can't see him right now.
I can't see him on the screen, so.
Director Foster?
Aye.
With five verbal aye, motion passes.
I did see Director Keith Tate signify aye on screen.
Okay, six, six zero.
All right, motion passes. The next action item is the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan. Information will be shared by Director Facilities Operations, Dale Carlstrom.
Well, good evening, Acting Chair Brooks and Chair Prince, Directors and Superintendent Heil. I'm Dale Carlstrom again, I'm the Director of Facility Operations, and I thank you for this opportunity to share with you and the community our efforts to protect our, and restore ISD 279, Osseo Area Schools facilities, and site assets. This evening, Jeff Arthur is Assistant Director of Facilities Operations, and I will provide a summary of the long-term facility maintenance report, reporting process, and update the board on the current direction from the LTFM Steering Committee and the Cabinet. We will discuss the construction startups for '25, '26 projects and the planning, excuse me, the planning for '26, '27 work. Thank you. The Minnesota Department of Education requires that we communicate a 10-year LTFM plan through the annual update that we will be discussing this evening. We are required to report detailed expenditure and revenue projections in spreadsheet form, as well as a statement of assurances that the planned expenditures meet the deferred maintenance criteria for the LTFM levy. The finance and facilities operations teams work closely with our professional consultants to establish a comprehensive assessment of the facilities and site assets to inform our facility's strategy and our financing strategy for the 10-year plan. a comprehensive assessment of the facilities and site assets to inform our facility's strategy and our financing strategy for the ten-year plan. This evening, we will be asking the board to approve the revised ten-year, ten-year plan due in July. Before we get started, I would, with the details of the plan, I'd like to recognize our facility staff and the professional consultants, construction team, and the site staff for their commitment to revitalizing and restoring the facility assets to better serve our students and our community. Our work is making a difference and I am proud of the progress we've made through the long-term facility maintenance program. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Arthur's, who will discuss with you some of the, oh, I'm sorry. I've got to talk about this first. Shown here is the ten-year plan expenditure application form. This, this is in your board packet and this form lists out the detailed expenditure categories that are tracked by our team and the Minnesota Department of Education. This form as well, as well as the revenue projection form have been updated for your review. As you can tell, the expenditure form is very detailed and this, and to summarize the plan, I've, oops. To summarize the plan, I've taken excerpts from the form to show you the total amounts requested year by year for health, safety, and deferred maintenance. The ten-year plan is a coordinated effort using LTFM dollars to supplement the Build a Better Future efforts that are occurring from twenty twenty-six through fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. We've increased the scope of the projects at Maple Grove Senior High, Osseo Senior High, and Park Center Senior High to include substantial amounts of deferred maintenance scope that will complement the remodeling initiative with mechanical restoration efforts. In addition, we have front-loaded deferred maintenance on our mechanical equipment at several priority sites. That would be Maple Grove Middle School, Willa Lane, Osseo Education Center, and seven elementary schools. Shown here is an excerpt from the ten-year revenue plan projections that is found in your board packet as well. And this form calculates the formulas for the LTFM state aid, the LTFM local levy, as well as the LTFM deferred maintenance bond distributions. Our facilities are, and financial consultants from Lers work closely with our facilities team and the administration services team to establish a comprehensive LTFM plan that works together with the board debt plan as pictured here. Our team starts our project planning in our assumption, with the assumption that we will maintain a flat tax rate over the life of the plan to minimize the tax impact to taxpayers. Pictured here is a graph of our projected total debt picture over the, over the next thirty years. The green portion of the bar represents future LTFM bond and LTFM general fund levy payments. We've achieved a flat debt plan while bringing critical deferred maintenance needs within the first four years of our plan. Oops. All right, there is your bar graph. Jeff Arthur is the Assistant Director of Facilities Operations. We'll now discuss our contribute, our, our construction plans for the next two years.
Thank you, Dale. Good evening, act, acting, good evening, Acting Chair Brooks, Chair Prince, members of the school board, Superintendent Heil. I'll be giving you a brief update on some of the current and future planned projects throughout the district. As in previous years, a portion of our LTFM scope covers categorical owner-managed projects. These categories include things like paving, concrete, painting, flooring, roofing, building envelope, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing systems. Majority of our sites receive some form of improvement in at least one of these categories each year. More than fifty projects outside of any major construction BBF projects are scheduled to be completed this summer alone. Our internal facilities team continually reviews site and or facility needs and prioritizes them with a focus on safety, security, building comfort, energy efficiency, functionality, and site appearance. We've incorporated an LTFM component, as Dale said, into most of the BBF projects to complete replacement of essential mechanical or electrical systems and finishes. At Northview, we will be converting the original pool space to a multipurpose room with new finishes, LED lighting, and mechanical systems. At Brooklyn Middle School, we will be completing the final phase of a full renovation of the first floor. This includes new science labs, flexible learning spaces, updated, updated restrooms, LED lighting, mechanical systems, new ceilings, and other improvements. At Maple Grove Senior High, this summer's LTFM scope is limited to the athletics area to replace about thirty percent of the building's mechanical equipment and associated piping, as well as renovation of the locker rooms. Osseo Senior is currently undergoing renovations of the existing locker rooms, some offices and classrooms, replacement of the building's chiller plant, as well as some of the mechanical systems. Media centers are also being renovated, flexible learning spaces and outdoor classrooms being added at seven elementary sites this summer. Arbor View is also undergoing a full mechanical, electrical, and finishes project, which includes heating and cooling plants. At Osseo and Maple Grove Middle School, we're renovating the science classrooms with new casework, lighting, finishes, similar to Brooklyn Middle School. This is a snapshot of the current summer construction schedule. You can see that all the sites, with the exception of Maple Grove Senior and Osseo Senior, are expected to be complete by the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Maple Grove Senior is a thirty-month project, which will stretch the next three summers with completion by fall of twenty-seven. Osseo Senior is an eighteen-month project that will conclude in August of twenty-six. For summer twenty-six projects, they will again have LTFM components embedded. Maple Grove Senior Phase Two will focus on the academic wing with mechanical system replacement, piping, LED lights, ceilings, and other finishes. Osseo Senior will have mechanical, electrical systems replacement to support all the BBF changes in the media center, cafeteria, auto shop, and art wing. At Park Center, we'll have new ceilings, lights, mechanical systems, and other finishes to support the BBF renovations of the three-story tower and other various locations. We'll also be completing another round of media center, flex room, and outdoor classroom improvements at five more elementary schools. Osseo Middle and Maple Grove Middle Schools will also receive renovations to media centers, maker spaces, and flex rooms. The remaining elementary sites are anticipated for summer of twenty-seven. Here's a snapshot of the current, of the projects that will either continue construction or begin in the summer of twenty-six. Park Center is still in design development, but is expected to stretch over three summers, similar to Maple Senior. We'll be bringing forward the bid results for Park Center, Maple Grove Middle, Osseo Middle by early twenty-six for your consideration.
Upon the board's approval of the LTFM tenure plan, the board will be asked to approve the preliminary LTFM levy in September. The levy certification will be on the agenda for the December regular business board meeting and the facilities team and design teams are currently working on project development planning for several projects that will be bid in the twenty, now, December twenty-five and through May of twenty-six timeframe. I'd like to take, thank the board for your consideration on the LTFM plan and the cabinet's support for our efforts to provide quality learning environments for our students, staff, and community. I will give the floor to the Acting Chair and Directors for questions and comments.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say this is like a huge undertaking to continually stay on top of all the facilities we have in our district and you guys do an amazing job. So, thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, similarly, I remember the stress of just maintaining one home. You all are maintaining an entire system simultaneously. So, thank you for all the work that you do. It's always exciting to see the work as it's completed across the district.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, board members, is there a motion to approve the ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan as presented?
So moved. I'm on it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and any discussion? Sherri, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
Director Tate? Director Mitchell?
Aye.
Director Foster?
Aye.
Director Prince?
Aye.
Director Dawson?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next action item is second reading of policies. General Counsel Amy Moore presented the policies in the first reading at our May twentieth, twenty twenty-five business meeting. After Amy presents the policies for second reading, I will call for a motion to approve all policies in one motion. Amy?
Thank you. So, since the last board meeting, we've had the policies posted for the past month, open for any questions, suggestions, or changes, and we have had no comments, questions, or suggestions. So, the policies remain as they were the last board meeting where we discussed them in detail with no other changes.
All right, is there a motion to approve the second reading of the following policies? Policy seven oh seven, transportation of students. Policy seven twenty-five, establishing school attendance boundaries. Policy seven twenty-seven, closing schools. Policy eight oh six, crisis management. Policy eight oh seven, health and safety. Policy nine twenty-one, non-use of tobacco on school property. Policy nine twenty-two, non-use of chemicals on school premises. Policy nine twenty-five, web and internet publishing. And policy nine twenty-six, possession of dangerous weapons on school property.
So moved.
So moved.
Add Director Foster on that one. Chair Prince for a second. Any discussion?
The one thing I remembered from our policy meeting is we decided on the second reading that we're going to just review the policies. So, that's something to keep in mind as you're part of these meetings is, these are all posted multiple places and you can go back and look at the recording from the previous time, but just for full transparency on that.
Thank you. All right, the board secretary will conduct the roll call vote.
Director Mitchell?
Aye.
Director Foster?
Aye.
Director Tate? Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Prince?
Aye.
Director Dawson?
Aye.
Six ayes and zero nays, motion passes.
Thank you. And our final action item this evening is gifts to the district. Is there a motion to approve gifts to the district totaling one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Mitchell, any discussion? The board secretary will conduct the roll call vote.
Director Prince?
Aye.
Director Dawson?
Aye.
Director Foster?
Aye.
Director Mitchell?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Tate? Six ayes and zero nays, motion passes.
And our final agenda item is adjournment. There will not be a negotiation strategies meeting this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-one PM?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
I got Director Foster on that one, buy it, a second. Sherri, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Foster?
Aye.
Director Tate? Director Prince?
Aye.
Director Dawson?
Aye.
Director Mitchell?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, motion adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.